And we are live. I'll go ahead and call to order the regular meeting of the City Council for November 17th, 2025. I spoke with or heard from Councilmember Shin, who will not be able to make it. He's got a little bit of contagious stuff and decided to not pass it around here, so we thank him for that. Invocation and Pledge of Allegiance will be led by Councilmember Gardner.
Let's pray. Heavenly Father, thank you for this day, Lord, and I'm just personally thankful for this beautiful weather that we've been able to enjoy the last week, God. We're so grateful to live in this beautiful community, and thank you for just the wonderful scenes of nature that you've given us around us, especially at this time of year, Father. God, thank you so much for allowing Councilmember Tierney to be back with us this evening and for his good recovery. We just pray for his strength to continue, to grow, and that he can be back to normal very soon, God, and we're just thankful that he's back with us this evening, Lord. Father, give us wisdom tonight as we discuss the people's business, and thank you for allowing us to be here to represent them, God, and we just pray for wisdom in all that we do and all the things that we discuss. God, thank you for those that serve this city each and every day, and we ask for your protection on everyone that takes care of this city and keeps us safe and gives us a great place to live, Lord. In Christ name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
All right. With that, we'll move right on into special guests and announcements. I'd like to call up Scott Grummer to make a little announcement.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, I am honored to announce a truly exceptional achievement for the city of Mammell. The city has been awarded the Esri Special Achievement in GIS SAG Award for 2025. This prestigious international award recognizes extraordinary efforts in using GIS technology to improve our world. This is a significant distinction, as Mammell was the only jurisdiction in the entire state of Arkansas to receive a SAG Award this year. This success is directly attributable to the exceptional work of Jason Lyon from our department. Jason's dedication not only earned us this award, but also resulted in his projects being highlighted on the President and CEO's slideshow during the plenary session at the Global Esri User Conference in San Diego, where he accepted the award on our behalf. Tonight, I would like the City Council and citizens of Mammell to join me in giving special recognition to Jason Lyon for his incredible achievement and the high standard of work he delivers for our community.
Is that some sort of timer on the podium there? I thought you brought a timer up to make sure you were...
Does that do our...
No, not at all. With that, we'll move on to the approval of the minutes. Y'all received a copy of that in your council packet. I'll open the floor for discussion. Councilmember Gardner?
I just had one thing that I noticed. Page three of the minutes, under Ordinance 1156, where it's referring to the mayor's... The purpose of the ordinance is the mayor's authority to dispose of assets, and this refers to the mayor is allowed to spend without council approval. So that "spend" word should just be "dispose of" or something to that effect. So I'll make a motion to amend that to "dispose of."
All right. I've got a motion to amend page three. Okay, we've got a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying yes.
Yes.
All opposed, no. Motion passes. Any additional comments, discussion items?
Motion to approve.
We've got a motion to approve and a second. Any discussion on that motion to approve the minutes of the November 3rd, 2025 council meeting as amended? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying yes.
Yes.
All opposed, no. Motion carries. Minutes are approved. I have several public comment cards, but they're on an agenda item, so we will get to them when we get to that agenda item. With that, we'll move on to the financial statement review. Y'all received an updated copy on your desk, and it went out in the minutes that are on the website a little bit late, but Mr. Armstrong, please come on down.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. Present our monthly October financial report. Fund 101, our general fund, cash balance position, roughly $5.89 million. On the city, revenues collected year-to-date, we have collected 76% of the revenues that we projected. Our expenditures, as far as what we budgeted to spend, we had 82% spend of what we projected. We have stable balances in our street fund, as well as our sanitation fund is recovering. And is there any other additional questions that I may ask, answer?
Councilmember Gardner?
I know those property taxes generally are, well, they're due October the 15th. I presume, have we already received the large deposit for those property taxes? Probably in the month of November.
November was a little slow, they projected. We haven't.
Oh, we have not? Oh, okay, okay. I know a lot of the...
I don't know that they... I think we've received them, but I don't know that they would be reflected...
Right. That's what I was...
For the October report.
Yeah, because I knew that was below, and it just appeared that a lot of our stuff is running below, and of course, I know a lot of that was due to the chargeback on the city sales tax, so, okay, just wanted to ask about that.
Thank you, sir. Any additional discussion? Seeing none, I entertain a motion to accept the financials. Motion and a second, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying yes.
Yes.
All opposed, no. Motion carries. With that, we'll move on to a procedural motion. I entertain a motion to have all ordinances and resolutions read by title only. Is there any discussion on that? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying yes.
Yes.
All opposed, no. Motion carries. The first three items under unfinished business, ordinance 1148, 1149, 1150, we've continued to table a little while. At this point, the documents needed for the annexation have still not been filed with the county. We'd like to just table this until those documents have indeed been filed by the county, and then we'll bring it back up on first reading.
On first, no, I'm sorry. First reading?
Yeah, that was something that was discussed, because we don't know if it's going to be a week from now or six months from now, and so it doesn't necessarily need to be, I don't think, but the city attorney thought that might be a good idea.
Yeah, I kind of changed my mind.
You've changed your mind on that?
I think we can table it and then come back for third reading.
Could you get the mic, please, for all the people watching at home?
Yeah. I think if we can table it and have it come back for third reading, I think.
All right. So, yeah.
Question on that. I know if we table something indefinitely, doesn't that require six council members to bring it back from the table? That's kind of a Robert's Rules of Order question. I just didn't want it to be difficult to bring back up if there's a date in the future.
We were kind of discussing this earlier, and we're not asking that it be tabled indefinitely and brought back up, but it's also not to a time certain. I think we can table it to a condition precedent, that is, the filing of the documents.
So can I make a motion that we table it until the proper documents are filed with the county, and then we can bring it back?
I don't see a problem with that. Mr. City Attorney?
I don't see a problem.
Okay, so moved.
All right, I've got a motion, second, to table ordinances 1148, 49, and 50 until the appropriate documents are filed by the applicant to Plaski County. Is there any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying yes.
Yes.
All opposed, no. Motion carries. With that, we'll move on to the third reading of Ordinance 1152, amending the city code regarding our recreational vehicle parking. Madam City Clerk, if you could please read that by title only.
Being enacted by the City Council of the City of Mammell, County of Plaski, State of Arkansas, an ordinance to be entitled, ordinance number 1152, an ordinance to amend the Mammell City Code concerning the parking of recreational vehicles, camping trailers, boats, trailers, and the like, and for other purposes.
Thank you, ma'am. This is on the third reading today, so I'll open the floor for discussion. Seeing none, I entertain a motion to adopt ordinance 1152. I've got a motion. Do I hear a second? Motion fails for lack of second. I'd leave the floor open for discussion.
I'll make a motion to... I'm sorry, I will second this motion for 1152.
Okay. I'll accept that. You renewing your motion, Mr. Holt? Motion to adopt ordinance 1152. And a second from Councilmember Gardner. Open the floor for discussion on that ordinance. If there's no discussion, Madam City Clerk, if we could please do a roll call vote on the motion to adopt ordinance 1152? One moment. All right.
Councilmember Holt?
Yes.
Councilmember Tierney?
Yes.
Councilmember Williams?
No.
Councilmember Gardner?
No.
Councilmember Booker?
No.
Councilmember Gronwald?
No.
Councilmember Wesley?
No.
All right. Motion fails for... Motion fails, and ordinance number 1152 is not adopted. With that, we'll move on to the third reading of ordinance 1153, amending the city code regarding fixed assets. Madam City Clerk, if you could please read that by title only.
Being enacted by the City Council of the City of Mammell, County of Plaski, State of Arkansas, an ordinance to be entitled, ordinance number 1153, an ordinance to amend the Mammell City Code and to adopt a fixed asset policy pursuant to Code 14-59-107 and the GASP board and for other purposes.
Thank you, ma'am. I'll open the floor for discussion. This also is on the third reading.
Motion to approve ordinance 1153?
I've got a motion and a second. Any additional discussion? Seeing none, Madam City Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Wesley?
Yes.
Councilmember Gronwald?
Yes.
Councilmember Booker?
Yes.
Councilmember Gardner?
Yes.
Councilmember Williams?
Yes.
Councilmember Tierney?
Yes.
Councilmember Holt?
Yes.
Motion passes. Ordinance 1153 is adopted. With that, we'll move on to the second reading of ordinance 1154, the creation of an A1 zoning district. Madam City Clerk?
Being enacted by the City Council of the City of Mammell, County of Plaski, State of Arkansas, an ordinance to be entitled, ordinance number 1154, an ordinance to amend the Mammell City Code to create the A1 agricultural zoning district and for other purposes.
All right. This is on second reading. I'll open the floor. Councilmember Gardner?
I'd asked a question at the last meeting about whether or not this would allow property owners that we annex into the city, if they would be allowed to harvest timber in the future without any... What's the word I'm looking for? Without any, the city causing any harm to them and not allowing them to harvest timber or cattle, whatever they had on their land. Has there been any discussion on that and whether this ordinance will protect the property owner's rights?
Mr. City Attorney?
Yeah, I spoke with Mr. Grummer, Mr. Lyon about that. I think what we're planning on doing is going through the code and seeing what needs to take account for this A1 district. And for your example, for timber, there's, we have some provisions about a timber management plan and that kind of thing that we'll need to specifically make exception for the A1 district. So we plan to run another ordinance with those provisions, those amendments.
Councilmember Williams?
So where would that put us with this ordinance?
Yeah.
So do we... Do we follow through with this one? This is the second reading of this one, so is it going to come up for third reading if we're going to amend it?
Mr. Grummer, when do you think we can get that done?
I don't know that, and that's a good question. I don't know that the two are really one ordinance. It could be done in one, because we have to go through and change, like the livestock ordinance and the animal ordinance, so I mean, we have to kind of go through the entire code. The one thing I can say is this is just creating the zoning district, and there's no properties currently zoned A1, nor are we really expecting any in the next short while. But, Mr. Grummer, do you know how long it would take? And it's probably more than just your department, it's probably citywide.
Yeah, I would give it a couple of months, just to be able to go through the code and make sure that we've accounted for anything, but as the mayor stated, we have no existing A1 inside the city limits, so this would be new annexed areas that are coming in. So the impacts to the city would be very limited, in my opinion, but either way, I think we are making some proposed amendments to our vegetative code that's coming through this month through Planning Commission, and some of that will address separating out the buffer requirements for areas that our tree management plan accounts for. So we could do the same with the A1 as well, so there may be... But again, a couple of months.
Councilmember Gardner?
Well, I understand the point of this, and I think it's great. I love it. I'm glad we're doing this, and I agree with what y'all are saying. We don't have any A1, because we don't have that zoning. So I would, I guess I'm fine with this going forward, but I just, I want to protect those that we are asking or that are petitioning to come into the city. The last thing I want is someone to say, "We want to come into the city for development purposes," maybe down the road, years down the road, but I don't want us to come back on them and say, "Oh, I'm sorry, that timber you have, we now have certain rules you have to follow," or whatever. I just want to protect their rights as property owners, so I just don't want that to get dropped down the road if we move forward with this, which I'm fine with, because we don't have that zoning right now, but I want to make sure we're protecting those that are coming to the city, asking to be annexed in, so.
Thank you, sir. Councilmember Williams?
I think I would feel more comfortable with this ordinance if all of the amendments were already in place before we pass one. I think we may forget it, we may, you know, something could happen between now and then, and I really... I don't know that I'm going to be for this until we have all of the information and all of the amendments done, and then we can see what the A1 would actually cover.
Thank you, ma'am. Councilmember Gardner?
This came from planning, right? It would have had to been reviewed by planning first.
Yes, sir.
So I'm just trying to think of a way to... Because I understand the intent, that the intent is to give us the ability to give a zoning to, you know, parcels on the outlying areas or estate lots that may want to be developed later on. I understand all that. I'm just, I'm trying to think ahead of protecting those that want to come into the city. So I know this would have to go back to planning if this specific ordinance was possibly changed, but I understand what the mayor and the city attorney are also saying. You know, there's other areas in our code that refer to timber management, or we probably don't have a lot of cattle management code in the city. You know, I don't want to make a big deal out of this by any means, because I get the point of it. I just want to make sure that there are protections in place.
Well, you know, there are people who want to have chickens within our city limits that aren't allowed to, and then we have people who will be annexed in who are A1, who are bringing in their chickens into the city limits. So I think all of this needs to be ironed out and flushed out while at once, not just piecemeal the whole thing.
Can there be simple, I guess, for the city attorney, can there be just even simple language that grants A1 exclusions or rights or something, or maybe not, I don't know what the right word would be there, but...
Maybe something that says that when there are... When ordinance 1154 is less restrictive than other sections of code that 1154 governs, or...
I'd prefer we go through it.
Hang on.
I'd prefer that we go through and change the city code to make specific reference rather than a blanket, although I see the benefit of it. I just, it'll be easier in the future for figuring out what applies where if we go through and make specific exclusions. If I may, and since we're running the Chapter 90 Vegetation through Planning Commission this month, I'll pay closer attention to that chapter, and I think the larger one is the Timber Management Plan that would impact this, and I can see what modifications there that we could actually apply this month, and then I'll have my staff go through the remaining chapters of code and see other areas, see if I can get at least a general report to you by the next city council meeting.
Okay. Thank you, Scott.
Thank you.
Any additional discussion on ordinance 1154? Next up is ordinance 1155, amending the city code to create an A1 land use category. Madam City Clerk, if you could please read that by title only.
Being enacted by the City Council of the City of Mammell, County of Plaski, State of Arkansas, an ordinance to be entitled, ordinance number 1155, an ordinance to amend the Mammell City Code to create the agricultural land use category and for other purposes.
All right. I'll open the floor for discussion. Seeing none, this will be on third reading at the next city council meeting. Next order of business is ordinance 1156, amending the city code regarding surplus property. Madam City Clerk?
Being enacted by the City Council of the City of Mammell, County of Plaski, State of Arkansas, an ordinance to be entitled, ordinance number 1156, an ordinance to amend the Mammell City Code concerning the disposition of city property and for other purposes.
All right. I'll open the floor for discussion. Seeing none, this will be on third reading at the next city council meeting. That concludes unfinished business, and moving on to new business, the first item of new business is ordinance 1158, calling for a special election for the bonds. Just a heads up, this is not being read tonight. This is being presented to the city council in a draft form for y'all to look at and to discuss and see if there's any changes that need to be made to the ordinance that will then be presented to the city council at the next meeting with the request to waive the three reading requirement at that point. So I'll go ahead and open up the floor for discussion on this matter. Councilmember Gardner?
You said you would want a suspension of the rules to vote on it, or I'm sorry, to vote on it next week?
Yeah, or at the next meeting.
Okay. Are you wanting to have all three readings at the next meeting?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, Councilmember Williams?
I'm sorry. I didn't mean to jump in there like that. Ordinance 1157, calling for a special election. Ordinance 1158 is to amend the master street plan, so we're off on our numbers here.
Madam City Clerk?
The, what's displayed on the screen is what's accurate. What you guys received, I believe, last week, that is not, but what's online is current, and then if you don't, if you weren't able to print off the most recent packet, I could provide that for you. But 1158 is the ordinance that is going to be considered for the bond, so what's online is as accurate, but if you don't have it, I can certainly provide you with it. So look at your screens.
Okay, so 1159 is the street plan.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, okay.
We did the, we read, we had three readings of the utility easement last meeting, and so that kind of threw the numbering off when I was doing it.
We sure did. Okay.
Mr. City Attorney?
This is not, strictly speaking, a legal point, but reading through the sample ballot, we have several different questions. Of course, each of them is for a different amount, for a different project, but at the end of each paragraph, it refers to the same one-half percentage local sales and use tax. Does it not seem like we're proposing seven different one-half percent sales and use taxes? Is that not a little confusing? So if you don't look closely, you might think we're proposing three and a half percent sales tax. I don't know. Maybe I'm the only one who reads it that way.
Leanne? Did you have a good...
Good afternoon, everyone. It's Leanne Burnett with Stevens. I see some familiar faces. Can you believe these other... We were here talking about bonds, and now we're looking at them, you know, coming to the point where you can actually do other projects. At the beginning, on page four of the ordinance, you'll see there's an introductory paragraph, and the end of that paragraph says, "The rate of taxation will be one-half of one percent even if bonds for more than one purpose are approved." And I absolutely see your point, that this is how all ballots are done in Arkansas, so... But part of the education to voters is, if you approve all projects, it's only one-half of a cent, or half of one percent.
Which is the current half cent that we currently have in.
Correct. It's a rededication of the existing tax.
Does anyone else have any additional questions?
I'm sorry, ma'am. Can you say your names, make your address for the record?
Sure. Leanne Burnett. I'm with Stevens, Inc.
All right. If there's nothing further, just a reminder, at the next meeting, this will be on the agenda and we'll be requesting the second and third readings at that meeting. All right. We'll move on to the next item of new business, which is the first reading of ordinance 1159 to amend the master street plan. Madam City Clerk, if you could please read that by title only.
Being enacted by the City Council of the City of Mammell, County of Plaski, State of Arkansas, an ordinance to be entitled, ordinance number 1159, an ordinance to amend the city's master street plan and for other purposes.
All right. This is, at the last meeting, the city council requested that the ordinance that we previously had, all three of the different changes on one map be broken off and submitted each in their own ordinance, and so this is the one dealing with the master street plan amendment in Country Club of Arkansas. That's the one along Mammell Boulevard that has been the more discussed one. I do have three public comment cards on this, so we'll get to those first. Ms. Gilbert?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Geneviva Gilbert, 404 Riverland Drive. So there's a proposed amendment to the master street plan to add Paul Eels across from Riverland Drive. The fact that it's called Paul Eels is not a coincidence. North Little Rock has a Paul Eels that currently runs behind Walmart. There was talk, discussion about that Paul Eels, North Little Rock's Paul Eels, being extended out and then dropping down into what would be Mammell's Paul Eels. This has significant chances of increasing the traffic to the area a lot. Not only would all... Not only would all of the traffic from the areas behind Walmart be added into Paul Eels across from Riverland, but also traffic from the areas of North Little Rock that are just east of Country Club of Arkansas, Phase 15, could enter the Boulevard through Mammell's new Paul Eels. Paul Eels was proposed as part of a PUD, a Planned Urban Development, or more specifically, a planned commercial development. And one of the main goals of a PUD, or PCD, is to preserve and enhance the neighborhood. The addition of traffic at the potential levels that it could be will not preserve and enhance the neighborhood. There will be higher traffic, as said. Higher traffic intersections lead to devaluations in property prices. There are safety issues. That place, that location is just in a curb. There's a question of a light going in. What happens if we proceed with all of this and no light is approved? What happens? Plus importantly, this is the gateway to Mammell. We should consider as a city what we want that gateway to look like, what we want to portray Mammell as. There will be a significant impact on residents in the neighborhood from traffic, also like side effects of traffic, lights, noise, pollution. Then again, we have to consider the people's will. You're aware that I've been gathering signatures of people who are opposed to the addition of Paul Eels, and that number continues to grow. That's all. Thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am. Next up is Mr. Cortez. Come on down. If you could state your name and address for the record, please, sir.
My name's Joel Cordy. I live at 406 Riverland Drive. Genevieve's neighbor. Tough act to follow, but she's right. You've heard me speak to this issue before. And in the past, my comments have primarily focused on the landscape buffer and the appearance. It's a moot point now, if any of you have driven past the site. It's a little awkward talking about a development while it's underway, but here we are. I still oppose the Riverland Drive to Paul Eels extension, as does Genevieve. For all the reasons that she identified, if you look at the map that's on the screen, and those in the audience need to pay attention to this, that large white square in the lower right corner is North Little Rock. The zoning for that is R4 for part of it and commercial for the rest. That can be rezoned. The commercial can be rezoned. So what we're looking at is a whole lot of traffic aimed at Mammell. Now, that would be great if I owned a business in the new development. I don't. I own a home in the new development, okay? I'm in the neighborhood, so that's where I'm speaking from. My last comment is this. I've been to a lot of meetings. I fully support the Planning Commission's recommendations and deliberations on this matter to you. Having attended their meetings, I fully believe that the people on the Planning Commission understand the situation, and what they decide, I'm willing to live with. So when it comes to you, listen to what they have to say. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Next up is Mr. Sutterfield. If you could please state your name and address for the record, sir.
Ken Sutterfield, 21 Danube Drive. Good to be before each of you. Many of you I've already communicated with by text or email, and I appreciate your kind words back to me about this issue. Much of what's already been shared, I do agree with, but I'm going to talk about just the impact of traffic in my...in front of my home. Already, Danube Drive is the longest thoroughfare through Riverland Drive. Already, it is a speed trap. Over 10 years ago, two speed humps originally were added, and now they're speed bumps, if you remember those signage that they changed. So it's already an issue in that area. This will only add to that area. On that Danube Drive are multiple cul-de-sacs of homes. There are hundreds, literally hundreds, of people living in and out off of Danube Drive. This would create a thoroughfare for shortcuts when there's traffic jams coming off of Highway 100. We need to remember that Mammell Boulevard is a highway. It's a state highway, Highway 100. And therefore, it will have a lot more issues coming off the North Little Rock side because of that. Also, in addition to that, I am concerned about the watershed of the additional construction in North Little Rock. I drove the area today. One thing that we can be proud of in Mammell is how we care for our properties. The other is not said for North Little Rock. But the effect will be felt in Mammell. The water drainage on Highway 100 right now, the concrete barriers that you see, I have seen those swollen above and beyond that. You're going to add tremendous watershed coming off that mountain when you add that road. With all the cutting that's taking place now, there will be additional water. I doubt there has been any watershed study on any effect of that. Has there been? Okay, so that's an effect. There's going to be effect on that highway and that intersection because it is a hill. Plus, there's a curve there for a danger. I've been involved in putting this traffic light in, and it's not an easy task, but it's also a very costly cast. When you look at who's really benefiting, the only people really benefiting are the businesses in North Little Rock. It does not benefit the Mammell residents to add this street. And I've shared that with you in my messages, and I appreciate your kind response back. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. With that, I'll go ahead and open the floor for discussion, if there is any. Councilmember Gardner?
This may be for Mr. Grummer or Mayor. You may even know the answer to this. When we first started talking about this specific amendment two months ago, whenever it was, I believe North Little Rock was running a companion street map amendment. Has they...I'll give credit to Mammell. Our website is much easier to navigate and find information compared to some other cities. Has their Planning Commission or City Council approved a change to Paul Eels already? Or are they considering one?
Scott Grummer. They have not yet, but I've been in conversation with their officials, their city engineer. They're working through it on their side. So not as of yet.
And it was just referred to, Mr. Sutterfield, any change that we even recommend on a state highway, while we may put something on a map, ultimately, it's up to the state, correct, to approve something, a change on their highway? Would that be correct?
That is correct. And Mr. Mayor, is it okay if I mention the corridor study that we discussed this past week? Or is it...
True.
So the mayor and I were on a call with RDOT officials, as well as Metro Plan. Metro Plan will be facilitating a corridor study for Highway 100, all the way from I-40 on the north to I-40 on the south, for the entire corridor. And they're going to be looking at things such as signalization, access, new access, and we asked them to pay close attention to this location. So they're going to be placing a full study on this, so I imagine that that is going to be the thing that's going to steer the future process as to where the connection's going to be. We already have a connection on the master street plan for a mid-block on this, but from a planning standpoint, it makes sense to have an intersection here just from connectivity, from a regional greenway standpoint. And then, as mentioned, I know increased traffic is not always what...or is not always what people want to hear, but from a commercial standpoint, we want increased traffic in the location. It makes it easier for the commercial to grow and survive and be successful there. And from a commercial standpoint, I would see this no differently than what you see in the town center, where you have commercial on one side and residential on the other side. It's been successful there, and we're just looking forward to be successful here.
Okay. So I know we've had trouble getting even a stoplight approved at that intersection you were just referring to by town center. RDOT would have the final say on what we made, on any changes made to that intersection, though. Is that right, or they would not? I don't know how that works.
That might be a little bit overly broad of a statement. If you're talking about whether they have final approval for a traffic signal at that location, they 100% do.
Would they look at...when they do the corridor study, would they look at traffic trends and say, "You can't put this in unless you put in a signal or a roundabout"? I'm just...are they going to...
No. So they...RDOT has not been...they may have recommendations, but RDOT has not regulated access to Highway 100, which is why, when you go into North Little Rock, there's driveways everywhere. The bulk of the access regulations onto and off of Highway 100 are Mammell's regulations, not RDOT's. Now, they may have a few...they may have a problem if you're trying to put stuff too close to intersections, but if you want to see what RDOT's okay with, just drive down the Boulevard in North Little Rock, and you'll see a whole lot of really wonky stuff. So they will have final say on if there's a traffic signal, perhaps if you're trying to do acceleration and deceleration lanes, if you're trying to do those sort of things. But they don't control or haven't controlled access. The corridor study, which we've talked about for quite a while, is finally making some momentum at Wednesday's Metro Plan meeting. Metro Plan is...has a resolution to offer, I believe it is $250,000 up for that study, which they think will be probably matched at about one-to-one ratio from RDOT. So we're talking about a pretty comprehensive study of Mammell Boulevard, but right now, it looks like it's going from I-40, so it'll hit that tail of 365, go down the Boulevard and all the way down, at least past 430, to the North Shore Park, and perhaps all the way back up Crystal Hill to that location, to I-40.
And Mr. Mayor, and City Councilmember, if you don't mind me adding as well, and sometimes these things tend to adjust as the development proceeds and the engineers are working onsite. One of the things that has come up, and it's also based on community feedback, is not having a direct connection to Paul Eels, but actually having this intersection that would wrap around and be part of Rochelle. And then wherever North Little Rock would tie in, it wouldn't be direct, but it could be maybe midway, but it would provide us the direct access. And then the North Little Rock would be a secondary, but it wouldn't be direct in.
Okay. So I'm looking at the master street plan that we've already approved, and I'd forgotten about this. We do have a curb cut in the middle of that development right now. It seems counterintuitive that we're going to ask our residents to go down the Boulevard, shoot a U-turn in the middle of Mammell Boulevard, and go back to a curb cut, which is what we have on the proposed street plan right now.
And that is my concern, is that if you did the mid-block curb cut, as you stated, the turning motions at that median would be more, and it would just increase the potential for hazard impacts with traffic coming around that curb versus if in the future that a light was approved at this location, it could provide some mitigation to that.
So I see, and now that we split this out, I can...and I've said this, I think, in one of the earlier meetings. I see this as two changes in one. The first change is moving that mid-block access down to Riverland, which in my opinion is a no-brainer because we don't want that U-turn traffic, and that tends to stack in that median. When the vehicles stack in the median is when people pull out and then the cars coming down the road get hit. So one is moving that access point from mid-block to...let me put this back up for anyone watching at home. And there are a dozen people. So currently, midway through this...can I borrow your mouse? Please. See if I can get this. Currently, this development here is slated to take access from Orleans and also with a mid-block here, which means that anyone that is north of Riverland, which is most of Mammell, unless they're going down Danube for an easy turn, they're going to have to come to this intersection and do a U-turn to go back up. Likewise, anybody who wanted to shop at these intersections, and we don't know if we're talking...I don't think we're talking about a median cut, which means anybody that shops in this area that wants to go south toward 430 would have to go up to Arnold Palmer and do a U-turn to come back, thus increasing the U-turn traffic at both of those. So in my opinion, when we're talking about where should this take access, the best place, especially as somebody who drives that intersection all the time and used to live just down the street, and that was my primary access, is to move the access to Riverland. Okay, that's issue one. Issue two is whether or not this access continues up to take and tie in to Paul Eels, which is a totally different issue, in my opinion. They're both kind of wrapped in to one master street plan amendment at this point. But the way I see it, there's actually kind of two issues there, because I'm very much in favor of moving that access point to Riverland, and I'm a coin toss on the Paul Eels connection. I see good things and bad things in that. So how to kind of...I just think it's really important to look at those as two different things. And sometimes when we give answers, we're answering one, but it implies that the other is also necessary, so.
Well, my other concern was protecting the folks along Orleans. If you're requiring...if you're requiring traffic to even go to Orleans and turn in, that's not good for those residents. So you need to have another connection point to allow commercial traffic to get in there. So anyway, okay, that's fine. Questions? Thank you, sir.
Councilmember Wesley?
So just for clarity, if we're using this last instance that you just described, it's not necessary for us to connect fully to Paul Eels?
Well, I think that ordinance 1159 includes both of those. I think it includes the access on Riverland and it includes the Paul Eels connection. So I think if ordinance 1159 is adopted, it includes both of those. But if ordinance 1159 could be split out again into two separate questions, I'm not necessarily recommending that. But if it fails, I would probably recommend coming...I'd probably be pushing to come back just for that Riverland access. I'm not sure the procedure on that or how that changes things, but...
And Mr. Mayor, I wouldn't...I wouldn't object to separating those out because I think right now our primary concern is the access point.
So inherent, that's kind of what I'm saying. We have one that I think is a really, really good idea and is better for all involved, including the folks on Riverland, that...or the Riverland area, that helps that intersection remain as easy to travel through in as possible. And if the only access is to that commercial, I don't envision seeing a whole lot more traffic at that intersection, just like when I think about turning left on Mammell Boulevard from Riverland, as I've done countless times. What I don't want to see when I'm making that is pulling up and seeing stacked cars waiting to do the U-turn in that area. The...I'm sensing, I think this is my interpretation, of the bulk of the more controversial element of this is actually the Paul Eels connection. And because it was all presented at once, just as kind of one big thing, it gets...it can get really muddy, and you either think, well, hey, this element is good, therefore I've got to go with that one. But I don't necessarily think that's the case. So I don't know if I answered your question or not. Okay. Mr. City Attorney?
Scott, I don't know if you know the answer to this, but given that we don't have any ETJ anymore, can we even make a planning... can we even make a planning decision about whether or not Paul Eels will connect to North Little Rock's Paul Eels?
Well, since it's not in the county, it's in the city, then it's going to be a collaborative process with the city, so.
So could we say no?
Well, it depends on, you know, where that final road ends up. Is it on, uh, you know, they have it right now platted on inside the city of Mammell, so we control access.
I mean, right now, it just goes, it's a proposed collector and it goes right to the municipal border.
That's how it's shown on this map. The, uh, the plat that was, uh, approved has it, has the road coming in and then it actually does tean like that, but.
I would argue that it doesn't. Well, I'm trying to pump it back up on the screen for those watching on YouTube. I'd argue that those lines are not on top of each other. We'd see lines right on top of, if you're talking about, what is the name of the road that goes north-south and ties into Orleans?
Rochelle.
Rochelle. I, I, I think Rochelle runs not directly on both. I think if the road ties in, I think if the road is approved on the border, like half-road in Mammell and half-road in North Little Rock, the street department might have a heart attack. But on top of that, I don't know that we could stop North Little Rock from tying in. But if that road is offset from the border, then we're not allowing that connection. You can't just build roads.
So, so in, in clarification too, the Planning Commission approved a subdivision plat, which is what initiated all the processes up there. And that plat showed the road Rochelle along the, the border running, uh, south from Orleans and then having a tie-in to this Riverland access. And what's shown on that plat actually does show access to North Little Rock. So it's like it's a stub to North Little Rock now. That was on the, on the plat that was approved. Now, the development plan that comes in is still going to have to be approved from the Planning Commission for this location whenever that comes through, so.
City Council.
I'm sorry, yeah, City Council.
That, that plat was approved when?
That plat was approved in September, I believe.
So at the, but it, so I guess what I'm asking is it was approved at the same time that the Planning Commission recommended this connection as well? So it, it was kind of approved?
Contingent upon the, the
The master street.
Master Street Plan Amendment.
Playing, making that connection.
So technically, if, if the amendment, if the master street plan amendment fails, then that connection fails.
I'm sorry, I guess.
Hang on, let me get to that screen.
Sorry, it's, it's still not exactly clear to me. Is this amendment proposing Paul Eels to link up with a future North Little Rock connection?
Well, the Paul Eels is in North Little Rock, so the proposed
We're proposing a Paul Eels, so to connect to Rochelle. And are we also connecting to stub out and connect to a future North Little Rock? Now, I understand North Little Rock is to decide whether theirs is going to connect.
Right.
But supposing that they do, is the City Council approving that connection tonight? I mean, not tonight, but in this amendment?
I, and ordinance 1159 has the connection to Paul Eels.
To North Little Rock's Paul Eels.
Correct.
Okay.
Councilmember Williams?
I'm still not, this is clear as mud to me. So, um, with this, with this ordinance, you're saying the two, the two things that we could vote on are in one ordinance. We've already separated one ordinance into three. And we're thinking about possibly separating this one into two. Tell me, explain to me, um, would there be a possibility that we would have an ordinance that is just the Paul Eels connection? And then what would the other ordinance be?
The move of the access from a mid-block crossing to Riverland.
Okay, okay. So there is a possibility that Paul Eels could just stay where it is in North Little Rock and not connect to us at all?
Yes.
Okay, okay.
I think there's a way to get the Riverland access without the Paul Eels connection.
Okay, okay.
Is what I'm, or vice versa. Well, I guess vice versa also, but. Councilmember Gardner?
I'm just trying to think through all the different scenarios that could play out here. If we did not connect to North Little Rock, I could see a scenario where that grotesquely increases traffic on Mammell Boulevard at that intersection. People trying to come off of the Boulevard and turn into whatever's going on there. It would seem like a connection via the back way would also allow people to access that commercial property in Mammell without needing to access the Boulevard. And then they could return back wherever they came from the same way without accessing the Boulevard. It's giving us more connections. I know, we're talking about multiple things, we're trying to parse this here as finely as we can parse it. But I'm just trying to think of scenarios here where you're trying to increase traffic to a commercial zone, which has been, it's approved for commercial building. And at the same token, we're trying to limit the traffic that can actually get to it. It just seems counterproductive to some degree. And I'm also wondering if it'd even make traffic worse in Mammell if you didn't connect it because you're forcing people to then use the Boulevard and that Riverland intersection. So I'm, that's just, that's just a thought.
Yeah, well, I mean, so that's true. If you look at the, hold on, let me go back and show this again. If you look at this interse, if you look at the Paul Eels connection here, all those, that area in Country Club of Arkansas would be able to access the Walmart area and the Mammell businesses without even having to get on Mammell Boulevard.
And they can't turn south now, anyway?
They can't turn south, so they're going, if they're, if they're hitting Orleans, they're going right. They're going northbound on Highway 100, hitting Arnold Palmer, doing the U-turn and going down. And I mean, so it does, it's, it's really, it, it, there's so many different things that have even popped up here that are kind of benefits and downsides to the Paul Eels connection. You know, um, so.
I've never looked at traffic in Orleans. Do, do, do a lot of people do a U-turn at Arnold Palmer to get out of town in the mornings? I guess they have to, don't they? Or they go through CCOA?
Anyways, uh, is there any additional discussion for the first reading of ordinance 1159 at this point? There will be ample opportunity, I think, again, at the second and third to have more discussion. So we will move on, and this will be on second reading at the next City Council meeting. With regards to, the next item is the first reading of ordinance 1161, amending the master street plan in the Industrial Park. Madam City Clerk, if you could please read that by title only?
Being enacted by the City Council of the City of Mammell, County of Pulaski, State of Arkansas, an ordinance to be entitled ordinance number 1161, and ordinance to amend the city's master street plan and for other purposes.
All right. Y'all are familiar with this. Open the floor for discussion. Seeing none, this will be on second reading at the next City Council meeting, which brings us to the first reading of ordinance 1160, amending the master street plan for the Morgan-Mammell area. Madam City Clerk, if you could please read that by title only?
Being enacted by the City Council of the City of Mammell, County of Pulaski, State of Arkansas, an ordinance to be entitled ordinance number 1160, and ordinance to amend the Mammell's master street plan and for other purposes.
I'll go ahead and open the floor for discussion. Seeing none, uh, this will be on second reading at the next City Council meeting, which brings us to the first reading of ordinance 1162, amending ordinance 1145. Madam City Clerk, if you could please read that by title only?
Being enacted by the City Council of the City of Mammell, County of Pulaski, State of Arkansas, an ordinance to be entitled ordinance number 1162, an ordinance to amend the ordinance number 35, an ordinance to amend ordinance number 1145 to correct the legal description of certain lands to be annexed into the city of Mammell and for other purposes.
All right, thank you. Mr. City Attorney?
So, originally this, um, originally the annexation did not include certain railroad right-of-way. And, um, the county judge requested that it include the railroad right-of-way.
Do I have that right, Mr. Grower?
Yes, sir, Mr. Thornton. So, uh, just like whenever you have a street that comes in from the county to the city, the, the judge wants the annexation to go all the way across the street and we take responsibility. Even though it's like, uh, the Highway 365, we don't, we're not responsible for the maintenance of it, but our annexation goes across the street so that he's seen it the same way with the railroad. It needs to go all the way across railroad, even though Union Pacific manages that.
Open the floor for discussion. Seeing none, this will be on second reading at the next council meeting, which brings us to Resolution 2025-41, amending the 2025 street fund budget. Madam City Clerk, if you could please read that by title only?
A resolution of the City Council of the City of Mammell, County of Pulaski, State of Arkansas, a resolution, um, uh, to be entitled resolution number 2025-41, a resolution to amend the 2025 street fund budget.
Thank you. Uh, okay, so this is for, y'all know we received the, um, grant for the Club Manor Roundabout. It is, um, that project was designed in 2019, but needs engineering changes to, for it to tie in with the Club Manor Improvement Project, as well as, um, now there's a greenway slated to go through it, so we want to do some increased pedestrian. This would, um, allow that engineering to go forward. Open the floor for discussion. Councilmember Williams?
Motion to adopt resolution number 2025-41.
I've got a motion, do I have a second? Yes. I've got a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on that motion? All right, all those in favor of adopting Resolution 2025-41, please signify by saying yes.
Yes.
All opposed, no. Motion passes. With that, we'll move on to Resolution 2025-43, authorizing the mayor to submit an offer to RDOT. Madam City Clerk, if you could please read that by title only?
A resolution of the City Council of the City of Mammell, County of Pulaski, State of Arkansas, a resolution to be entitled resolution number 2025-43, a resolution to offer to partner with the Arkansas Department of Transportation and Pulaski County on the Interstate 40 Highway 365 Interchange Improvement Project and for other purposes.
Thank you, ma'am. All right, just a little bit of refresher, uh, RDOT has in its STIP a $17 million interchange improvement project at I-40 and Highway 365. They had forecasted a local match of $3.4 million. They reached out to Pulaski County to pay the $3.4 million match. Pulaski County, uh, Judge Hyde approached me, asking for Mammell to pay half and for them to pay half. I brought it to y'all to get feedback and the, the marching instructions were, go negotiate with, um, um, the county. We were unable to come to an agreement. They want, uh, the city to pay half. I think it's more appropriate if the city paid 25% of that. And so at this point, my offer, what I'm requesting is just sort of your backing to go to RDOT to offer, uh, 25%, $850,000, paid over several years, uh, to be part of that. As a reminder and refresher, one of the reasons that we want to be part of that is there, how those, um, on-ramps and off-ramps interact with that area is going to play a heavy role in what can and cannot be done there. For instance, the access road, um, that goes, uh, east is not conducive to, um, allowing traffic to get into it or off of it very easily. It renders that area behind the, the Shell Station and the like very difficult to develop because you, you can't even use or, or draw too much traffic in. We want to make sure that they're designing something that fits Mammell. And so, to really kind of have that say, we want to partner with them and put some skin in the game so that they'll actually listen to what we have to say. So, go ahead and open the floor for discussion on this. If there's no discussion, I'd entertain a motion to adopt Resolution 2025-43. I've got a motion, second, any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying yes.
Yes.
All opposed, no. Motion carries and Resolution 2025-43 is adopted. That concludes new business. Really quickly, under Mayor's comments, um, I passed out the calendar for the 2025 budget meetings, and that was emailed out to the distribution list. Please take a look at that. It's a, it's a tight schedule to get it all adopted by December 15th. But we didn't want to plan anything during Thanksgiving week because we know a lot of people go out of town. If you are unable to make one of these meetings and there's a number of people that can't make it, please let me know, especially Budget Meeting Three, though any of them. So, just holler at me. The, um, uh, so I'll move on to council member comments. Councilmember Carter?
I'll just quickly ask you a question about something that's in the packet. Those grant letters, did you discuss those? The, uh, one that we received for Woodland was denied, but one for Lake Willistee was approved?
I didn't point out the denial. I think I pointed out the award, but I wasn't sure. So I just, when I got the letter in, I, uh, did it. It's definitely worth mentioning, uh, we received and applied to, um, the, the RDOT directly for a TAP grant. Normally we go through, um, uh, normally we go through Metro Plan to get our TAP grants. This one, uh, went through RDOT and we got $500,000 for, um, to improve the trails at Lake Willistee. So, we're getting ready to, uh, get going on that and see if we can't, uh, do something with that before and use this money. You know, last year we did some trails. It might have actually been earlier this year, but it was with last year's money and the project may have carried over to this year. We're trying to improve all the trails at Lake Willistee and as many as we can. So, we're pretty much taking stabs at every grant that we can when it comes to trails, so.
Differently, the, uh, the wide-up crossing roundabout is fantastic. I'm glad it's open. How are those stop signs doing that we're hoping to yank out of the ground soon? Do we have an idea on when we can pull those out?
The, um, I was in a, an email chain with Mike Hogan, our engineers representative in North Little Rock, and I think we're working on getting the signs. We're a little bit, we were waiting until we were pretty confident that they weren't going to alter the flow of traffic anymore. And then making sure that when we remove two stop signs, that we've got enough signage and notice to make sure that the cross-traffic that's used to a four-way stop knows that the cross-traffic is no longer stopping. So don't just stop, think you have the right-of-way and go, so.
Thank you, sir.
But yeah, it's in the works. Uh, and I guess just while mentioning that, we think that the only other time there's going to be, the only other time there should be any sort of interruptions with the flow of traffic other than a moment or two as they're maybe hauling some stuff over for landscaping, is when they do the painting, um, and the striping because there's no real signage out. There's little temporary things, but it's going to be a full, you know, um, set there. So when they do that, they may have to block lanes and flag traffic around. But there shouldn't be anything else that's really impacting the traffic flow in that area. Any additional council member comments? City attorney comments? City clerk comments?
Yes, I just wanted to, uh, just for a matter of record, state law has required, uh, cities to file with the county clerk if you would like to be, uh, an at-large or a by-ward, um, voting city in Mammell. city, and Mammell has already passed legislation that we are voting by wards in regards to our council members. So I did make sure that that information has been filed with our county clerk, and we are in compliance to be an at, of by wards within our city. Our, our city attorney wants to make sure we do our due diligence, so you guys might have some more legislation coming before you in regards to that, but Mammell is 100% in compliance in regards to that in the state law.
Yeah, the, and if I can just follow up, there, we, we've assumed that, with, there's, the city attorney maybe is a little bit less certain, and so back in 2001, 2002, when the election was, we split it off during the change of government, the, the state law requires that an ordinance be passed, saying that we're voting by wards instead of at-large. And so we may at the next council meeting, just because we didn't actually pass an ordinance doing that, we passed an ordinance referring it to the ballot, and electors voted on it, but that isn't specifically stated that way in state law, so just to be double sure, we're dotting i's and crossing t's, at the next council meeting, we may be presenting an ordinance that says what the electors did back in the day, but if we do, we'll be running it three readings and an emergency clause at the last minute, just to make sure that we're getting that filed over. But we're still looking into that, to be double sure, but. Is that accurate?
That's exactly.
That's exactly, okay.
Thank you, sir.
All right. I think that's it. If there's nothing further, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to motion to adjourn the City Council meeting on November 17th, 2025.
No second?
Second.
I was gonna say motion fails for lack of a second.
That's true.
Got a motion, second, to adjourn, any discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying yes.
Yes.
All opposed, no. Motion carries. We adjourn.